All right, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. I'm going to call the select board meeting to order at six o'clock. Our agenda tonight will start with the public comment session, followed by a dangerous dog hearing to begin at 6:05. Let me have the approval of meeting minutes for three meetings on June 3rd, June 24th, and July 3rd, 2025. Appointments. Wetlands Protection Act funds regarding the 2025 legal fees. Discussion on the removal of the Norway spruce trees in the front of the town hall. Discussion on the town hall featured artist mural. An update on 473 High Street. Anybody in the public here that would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda? Did you raise your hand?
No.
No.
I couldn't do that.
Oh, okay. No one does that. What do you mean waving their hands? All right, there being none, we will we will take the approval of minutes out of order.
They look good to me.
Is there a motion to?
So I move that we accept the meeting minutes from June 3rd, 2025, June 24th, 2025, and July 3rd, 2025. Second.
Any discussion? Modifications, changes, recommendations? Be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we've got three more minutes. What can we do in three minutes?
Do you want to do the appointments?
Sure, yeah. Let's do that.
For appointments, too.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Yeah, what about appointments?
On the back.
Do we have any appointments?
I'm sorry.
This is the back.
Do you want to say it's the wetlands?
Yeah, I know, but appointments.
And did we have appointments?
We do. I forgot to print out the motion.
It was in our packet. Well, let's do the wetlands protection. So there's a request by the Conservation Commission to use $1,900 from the Wetlands Protection Act funds in the Wetland Bylaw Fund for legal fees, having to do with looking into the title search for a land acquisition on lower Massapaw. And using these funds requires approval by the select board.
Do we usually fund that up to like Brian Falk's firm to do that title? Looks like it's sort of in-house, in that sense?
Yeah. They've been working on it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, pretty standard and less than 2,500 bucks.
This 1,900 is going to cover that expense.
It's going to cover a portion of the expense.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I move to approve the Dunstable Conservation Commission expend $1,900 from the Wetlands Protection Act Fund and Wetland Bylaw Fund for legal fee expenses associated with certification of title searches required for acquisition of the Goldwaite 1.3 acre lot, lot number 13670 on Lower Massapaw. Second.
Any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Two minutes?
You could make a motion to approve the appointments.
Okay.
Continuing the packet due July 15, 2025.
Where is that? Okay, Henry.
The Wetlands Protection Act funds.
Okay. No, you can just state it as of?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can use me.
Yep. I have a motion.
Okay. All right.
So the two new appointments for the Tac Day Committee is the new Georgia Collector and Robert is the new shared reassessors.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay.
All right, I'm going to move, I move to appoint town officials, board, and committee members as presented in the document entitled Appointments, staff committees, boards, and commissions dated July 15, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's it, could be annual appointments.
Okay. All right. 6:06. So we can go back in line with our agenda. And we will go back to the dangerous dog hearing. There's a very specific procedure that needs to happen for this. So I will open Dangerous Dog Hearing, 6:06.
Okay, I'll read the advertisement. Town of Dunstable Dangerous Dog Hearing notices hereby given that under General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 157, the Town of Dunstable will hold the Dangerous Dog Hearing on Tuesday, July 15, 2025, at 6:05 PM at Dunstable Town Hall, 511 Main Street, determine whether the dog that resides at 139 Off Bond Street is a nuisance or is dangerous. All interested persons are invited to attend.
Is John with us?
John is on his way. He's not here yet, though. He just, that's who called me. I just stepped up to take it. Yes.
Okay. Well, we need to have him here because he's part of this.
I think we think she can swear in some of these people.
Okay, all right. Well, we can swear on the other folks while we're waiting for John.
Sure, I think he can wave him as he comes in, but we can't have him before him.
Is David Hopkins here?
Mm-hmm.
David? Hi, I'm just going to swear you in.
I'm sorry?
I'm just going to swear you in for your testimony. If you could just raise your right hand and you swear the information you're allowed to provide is the truth, the entire truth about the matter. And before you testify, I just want to also signal to you.
Okay.
Okay. Do you swear the information you're allowed to provide is the truth, the entire truth about the matter? Thank you. Is there anybody else that's claiming to testify? Okay. Erica, do you swear the information you're allowed to provide, if you provide it, is the truth, the entire truth about the matter? Thank you.
John is here.
Oh, yes.
Hi, thank you. If you could state your name and your address. Okay. And do you swear the information you provide is the truth, the entire truth about the matter?
Yes.
Thank you. John, can I just swear you in before we start it?
Sure.
Mr. Arrieta, do you swear the information you're allowed to provide is the truth, the entire truth about the matter?
Yes.
Yes. And well, yes. Do you swear the information you provide is the truth, the entire truth about the matter?
Chief. Chief. Want to get sworn in just in case.
Do you swear the information you're allowed to provide is the truth, the entire truth about the matter?
I guess so.
If you think you have something to say. Susan Hawkins, do you swear the information you're allowed to provide is the truth, the entire truth about the matter?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Muldoon.
Have them speak first. All right, so as you all know, you're all here for this, we assume, for the Dangerous Dog Hearing. Fortunately, we're back here again. But I guess we will start with the complainant's concerns, followed by the defendant's concerns, and then the dog officer.
Good evening. Again, I'm David Hawkins, and I don't think anybody who's at this meeting dealing with this matter really wants to be here. But it is an issue that needs your attention. I'm not here to ask the board to euthanize this dog, nor am I here to ask the board to remove the dog from its owner. I am here to ask the board to insist that the dog's owner, Mr. Dawson, keep that dog under restraint at all time. Bill needs to understand that the dog needs to be on a leash before it goes outside, before it gets out of the truck. The dog is aggressive. You used the term dangerous or a nuisance. I don't know what dangerous is until tragedy happens. A can of gasoline is not dangerous until somebody drops a matchfire. The dog has attacked my young Labrador four times. Aggressively. I'm convinced that at one time, he would have killed my puppy if Bill and myself were not successful in pulling him off. I walk regularly around the Massapaw area. I should right the walk there safely without looking over my shoulder at the dog. Bill needs to do the responsible thing and keep that dog restrained. I may also note that I was on the street when a lineman got out of his truck and the dog flew at him. Bill was right behind him. But if the lineman wasn't successful in getting into the truck, you would have been dealing with a human issue rather than a dog-dog issue. So my words tonight is to stress that dog must be restrained. Bill must learn how to handle that dog before some tragedy happens. There are more kids on the 325 Off Bond Street in that area than there have been in 30 years I lived there. They go down on bicycles, they walk off Off Bond Street with fishing poles before tragedy happens. We have to do something. Thank you for your time.
I have a question. The incidents that you just explained, a national grid lineman?
I think it was a cable lineman, but you were a lineman.
A utility provider?
Yes.
And the attack on your dog?
Yes.
That's happened multiple times, okay? In each of those instances, was the aggressive dog, which I think his name's Max, was Max on a leash or a rope or restrained?
No, not at all.
Or was he not? So he had free run to go chase the cable guy or the utility guy?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, according to?
I'm just asking. My name is Mike Hawkins. I'm Mr. Muldoon's attorney. I've been his attorney for almost 50 years. He asked me to speak for tonight. You know, speak as well. Another half an ass.
Can I just, before you do that? Just want to ask you. Do you swear the information you're allowed to provide is the truth, the entire truth about the matter?
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, be sure I understand. I read a couple of written complaints that Mr. Hawkins put in, and I know on both of those, he mentioned about breaking up the dog, and he just told me tonight that Bill helped him break up and fight with the dogs, this couple living with a car. On those instances, Mr. Hawkins, you actually, you mentioned you were kicking Max to break up with your dog?
While I was kicking and yelling and screaming at the dog, Bill was pulling him off.
Okay. And you mentioned that out of two of these incidents?
Two of them. The first two incidents occurred. I didn't like them. That just happened.
And Max didn't like you?
Excuse me, conversation needs to come through the board, not each other.
I just wanted to clarify that while Max was being kicked or somehow you moved from the sufferer of another dog, Mr. Hawkins, he never bit Mr. Hawkins, correct?
Not to my knowledge, no. I don't believe that it's been reported.
And is there? I know that Mr. Aaron Hawkins has mentioned a few incidents. Mr. Muldoon recalls an incident when Max was a puppy. Mr. Hawkins' dogs, when Max was playing with them, aggressive, it, Max. Mr. Hawkins, do you acknowledge that, do you remember that?
Don't recall that.
Mr. Muldoon can tell you about that. There is an issue when Max was a puppy and was attacked by Mr. Hawkins' dogs.
You don't have a report for that.
There's no report.
Yeah, we have to act within the confines of what we have to act with.
It wasn't really a fight. You know, I socialized Max quite a bit when he was a puppy. And I walked him to the mall, we went to dog training school. We have a lot of, we have a good fish-sized family. We're young children in the family. And I walked him back. In this particular incident, when Max was probably about six months old or whatever, I was walking the back trail, leaving my property. And Mr. Hawkins was probably coming down the trail as well. This is up on the bridge. And Max always played with other dogs. Erica would tell you that in the sense that I don't think Erica could probably make a statement that Max had attacked her dog and made that implication many, many times. And in this particular situation, Max just thought that he was going to be playing with Hawkins' dog. Went over and the huge dog bounces right on Max. Mr. Hawkins and I broke it up real quick. So that's kind of like a scar on my dog's head because he was right into a lot of places like Lotte Field, you know, Tesaline Mall, and other places, and Nashwhar, K9. And he's played with a lot of dogs without any issues. And he became very friendly and just wanted to play, play, play. And there was an incident then that Max ran that he looked at, "If I come up and play, I can get hurt." Max is not a vicious dog at all. I can prove that. Very not vicious at all. And when Mr. Hawkins calls him vicious, this is a dogfight. When this dogfight happened, Mr. Hawkins' dog was off the leash. My dog was off the leash. The unfortunate situation out of this whole thing is I give right away past my property, you know? Max probably thinks two things. One is territorial. And second of all, is the fact that I am a senior, and Max has been raised to watch over me. For example, when I go walking the trails, particularly Off Bond Street, the, I don't hear a thing, even with my hearing aids. As I was here the last time, I agree with you, but my hearing aids, and I had to move up closer. Hearing aids don't give me the distance, you know, ability to hear. So when Max is trained, and when a car, let's say I'm walking back to my home on Off Bond Street, and my back is still say to the mailboxes, Max is trained to let me know that there's a car coming from behind me because whatever noise the car is making, I just don't hear with my hearing aid. Max stops, looks away where the car is coming, and kind of like looks at me and gives me the signal that there's a car coming, and we just pull over and let the car pass by. I can verify that this dog has grown quite a bit since the last time we met. You know, he's extremely obedient. I think that Erica has seen him in action, and he's very obedient and very intelligent. I mean, I've been putting this into use and trying to train him, and it's been working very well. He doesn't leave my property highly at all. I mean, most of the time, 95% of the time, he stays in the house and he goes into the pen. They may say that my pen is not safe. I did change the pen one time, and this is the second pen. The pen was put up just before I had surgery. And prior to my surgery, I had a stroke. So from, let's say, last summer, this early after I met you people, I had a stroke, and it lost my eyesight, my right eye got damaged, but it's restored back through injections by a retina specialist. And so in this period of time, I had a stroke. I've been treated, and then I had to have knee surgery. I had a knee replacement. And now the next time in September, I have to have my left knee replaced. So I put up a fence. I can tell you one thing. I tell Max to stay in that fence, and he won't. Mr. Hawkins has told me that fence is not, if, he said if the dog had, Mr. Hawkins has worked with me and a little bit of an insult, said if the dog had half a brain, he'd be able to get over that fence. I don't think so because basically Max has taught to stay in the fence. He has never broken that fence at all, broken to get out. You know? The situation with the utility guy. Utility guy was a big guy, early guy. And unfortunately, again, they're on my property, okay? Max saw him and basically ran out to see the utility guy, and he just rattled. It wasn't a situation where it was broken up. The situation was, I said to Max, "Stop, I'm here." And he answers that command. It's the same thing that happened in this issue with Mr. Hawkins and with his crossing and getting toward my property. His dogs were off the leash. I was just heading to church. I quickly went out of the house to be able to turn around and let Max do his doo-doo because when I do leave the property, I leave Max in the house. He doesn't even get out into the fence, the pen. He stays in the house. So when I stepped out of the house, I just want a match to do his doo-doo. And again, Mr. Hawkins, who was coming up toward my house with the dog off the leash, he turns around and tells me that I hustled down there. I can't hustle. I can't even run with my knees, my legs. So by the time I got down there, he was kicking my dog. My dog didn't get vicious at him. I would think that if it was a really mean dog, a dog with quite its own dog, that wasn't the case. I just said to my dog, he says, "I've taken it." I said to Max, "Stop, I'm here," and that's what he did. You know, he broke away right away. I can bring him in here and teach, show you that command, and he's very, very obedient to whatever I say. He follows me like a shell. Unfortunately, in this situation, I had to turn around and let Max out so that he'd go right around my yard. And unfortunately, he picked up the scent that they were coming, and he looked at his mind, oh. You know, Hawkins' dogs and my dog are enemies because of that one initial fight. Okay, so I'm willing to turn around and answer what Hawkins says, to turn around and keep him compliant and on a leash, you know? Unfortunately, in one situation, I have knee replacement. You can see the scar on my knee, is that I can't, I just starting to be able to walk. It's been about seven months since my operation. It takes over a year to heal from it. And I have this one that is soon. That's just what I heard.
What I can do perhaps, you know, like I spoke with Mr. Hawkins, and I spoke with Mr. Silva, discussing the incident. Under these cases, under the statute, you know, when you put a complaint as brought and it's either nuisance or dangerous law, then you have several options. You can just dismiss it, which is what happened last year. You could deem him a nuisance dog, and then in that case, you order that a medial action be taken to immediately break the concerns. Or you could think most experience that he's dangerous. There are several, seven options. They're ranging from restraints to actual euthanization. So you have several options, but we have a plan to address the concerns that Mr. Hawkins justified now. If I could just give you a little background. Mr. Muldoon spoke with other people in the neighborhood, and circulated a petition that was signed, and it says, "We, the undersigned, hereby attest, as a resident of Off Bond Street, Dunsable, Jermaine Shepherd dog Max, the best of my observation, is not a vicious and nuisance dog. We also alert that Max is highly compliant with taking the fence outdoors, on leash at all times, would be able to walk by longer than Muldoon." And that was signed by residents at 221 Off Bond, 211 Off Bond, 179 Off Bond, 229 Off Bond. For that, for the record.
Thank you.
And Max is obviously well taken care of and has all his shots, and he visits the vet regularly. And we have a statement from the veterinarian at Dunstable Animal Clinic, to whom it may concern. I'm writing this letter about Max, the two-year-old German Shepherd dog owned by Bill Muldoon. I have been Max's veterinarian since he was a puppy. He's always been a pleasant dog at the clinic. The only reason why is that he's also an active horse dog. I think offered that by Dr. Sacramone, well, to the board's consideration. And additionally, just, I can give you a random example. When Mr. Muldoon had said that Max could come in here and he'd be fine, you know, to heat, Max, not through Mr. Muldoon's, to the bank, he brought the dog into the bank. And he actually had the bank manager write a letter saying, "This letter provides information regarding interaction with William or Will's dog Max. While assisting William, he had Max with him. At that time, Max was well behaved, friendly, and showed no signs of aggression. As I would pet him and interact with him, he had no issues. He listened to commands from William, spent most of the time riding the floor. At no point during the incident did I feel uncomfortable or unsafe." I'm just giving you a random example where he takes the dog out, rather than leaving the car, he takes him in, and he's no problem, not aggressive in those instances. I can provide that for the board's consideration as well. I can show you some photos of Max. You may have seen them at the last hearing. I think I saw some of them, but by way of an example.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does he have any designation for support or service level?
I can get to that in a moment. I can show you some photos of individuals with Max, one of whom is here tonight, will testify. That's a gentleman who's a carpenter, and I'll tell you what his role will be in a moment. But there he is with Max. Here they are inside the house with Max. He's an affectionate, loving dog. The issues seem to be with other dogs with whom he may have had a history. I can address your question, Mr. Mead, that I have a letter from Mr. Muldoon's physician, showing some clearly conscious, to whom it may concern. I'm writing this letter on behalf of my patient, William Muldoon, whom I have been treating for ongoing medical conditions, including lymphoma and recent episode of atrial fibrillation. These diagnoses have understandably placed a considerable emotional and physical burden on Mr. Muldoon as he navigates his treatment and recovery. As part of his care plan, we have discussed supportive strategies to help manage the emotional challenges that accompany serious medical illness. Mr. Muldoon has shared that his dog Max plays a central role in maintaining his emotional well-being. He finds the animal's presence to be deeply therapeutic, especially during his excursions and daily activities, when the dog provides comfort, grounding, and motivation. It is my clinical opinion that Mr. Muldoon would benefit significantly from the designation of his dog as an emotional support animal. The bond and emotional support provided by this animal are vital to his overall quality of life and well-being. Please feel free to contact me if any questions needed. He's never gone through the formal process of designating him as an ESA because he lives at his own home. It's unnecessary, but certainly there's a letter from his medical practice we're looking off to the board. The support of designation of his dog as a service animal.
Support.
Support, excuse me.
Big difference.
Very big difference, yeah.
Mr. Muldoon also alluded to, if he has hearing issues, he's got hearing aids in now, and you know, sometimes he gets difficulty hearing things depending on where the sound is coming from. When he goes out for a walk and starts his rehab, he's had knee replacement surgery on one, he's got the other done. Max is basically, his ears, as he's walking down, and if he's a pet the dog, and a car is coming, Mr. Muldoon may not hear, but it would wander off. Max alerts him to it. Max also provides safety for Mr. Muldoon and his family now. His son is living with him. He's a disabled dad. He's living in the house. The dog provides safety and comfort for the entire family. I know there was a hearing a year ago, and that was on some issues regarding pit holes that are in a pen owned by a woman named Sharon. Unfortunately, or reverberally, it's not even the term we use. I watched the hearing this afternoon. The complaints couldn't even bother to appear at that one. Now, Mr. Muldoon was a little upset at that hearing because he denied that his dog got into a pen with two pit holes and injured the pit holes. Yet, he was presented in an aggressive manner by Sharon's boyfriend with a bill, and to keep peace in the neighborhood, he painted them. We were here to him, and I think Mr. Mead also could confirm it. The two pit holes were in a fenced-in area, and there was chicken wire through a broken slab that he may have cut himself on. But Mr. Muldoon, I understand that he was upset that Max was falsely accused of colluding with the police. But Mr. Muldoon, I understand that he was upset that Max was falsely accused of causing that injury. It cost over a thousand dollars, and then he complained that he couldn't even show up for the hearing. That complaint then said, "I want another thousand dollars in compensation." Mr. Greenhalgh said, "No, you weren't supposed to do that." Now, another instance with Mr. Hawkins, and Mr. Muldoon touched on it. If you're breaking up a fight with dogs, and you're kicking the dog, and it's in his report technology, the dog doesn't like him. It's, there's some history or some conflict that Max may have with Mr. Hawkins' dogs. The problems with Mr. Hawkins and his dogs are, I think admittedly, dog on dog. And that's the situation here. So the plan we have to address this, so I ran this by Mr. Greenhalgh, and I spoke with Mr. Silva about it as well. Mr. Muldoon would offer to immediately build a tall wooden fence in his property. He has a wooden fence now, keeping a pen area where Max stays, and that's about a four-foot-high fence. His contractor and General Andy Van Sier, who will tell you that he's going to increase the size of that fence immediately up to six feet. Just there's no issue with potential of Max getting over it. He would plan on getting a chain link fence sometime in the fall. I've talked to his degree halter about that, and he's made some recommendations about the size of the fence and such. But that could be done in the fall. Mr. Muldoon also wants to get additional training for Max to address his issues with other dogs, to the extent that they exist. He's got to line up training for Max at the Good Mojo Dog Manor in Norfolk, New Hampshire. Mr. Muldoon is going in for surgery on September 11th on his other knee. And he's going to have to board Max. And Good Manor, or Good Mojo Dog Manor, has a program where they can board the dog and train it. And then when he's done, they'll work with Mr. Muldoon and go over what Max has learned and worked for.
We did close to a mess there.
Yeah, they'll be plenty of other dogs there.
Where he's supposed to go.
And then Mr. Muldoon is amenable to leashing Max at all times when he's off the property. I would acknowledge, I think Mr. Muldoon, after that, obviously, when he's taking the dog out for a walk, it helps him to walk through his legs and his recovery. But when Max is going around and wants to do his business, sometimes, you know, it's a little more walking than Mr. Muldoon might be up to. He has it. He will agree now that he will keep the dog leashed at all times. And I know there was discussion about an electric fence at the last hearing. And Mr. Muldoon was amenable to that idea. I would just say, there was some dispute within the family about making vague issues surrounding electric fence. And then shortly after that, Mr. Muldoon had other medical issues he had spoke, and that was kind of tabled. But he would certainly reconsider that option, maybe that would settle that the board saw fit. But he can keep a pen with a six-foot fence for the dog, which can be converted to a chain link, you know, in the fall. And he will get additional training for Max in September. So getting back to those options that we have. My initial suggestion is, board would consider this a fit. Perhaps continue this hearing to some point in time and see how this goes with the dog training in September, the addition of the fence, and the acknowledgement that Max would be on a leash at all times, when he's off the property. I think that would probably be the best way to go. You would still retain all your options if something happened down the road. I would be looking for some time, a few months, if the board would see fit to do that, to see how it progresses, and all the other problems that maybe else happen. I'm sure Mr. Greenhalgh can address that as well. I think with the dog-to-dog issues, this might be the best thing to do. Secure the area where he stays outside, make sure he's on a leash when he's off the property, and extra training. Hopefully that would address it. And rather than make a decision today, because you have several options, and we just continue this and see how this works out. Certainly that would be the best for Max, given the important role Max plays, Mr. Muldoon said. I respect the request of the board to consider that. If you get to work on those options as part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. John, I'd like to hear from you.
Pardon me?
Do you have a statement that you would like to share?
I'm just, I'm just only concerned I have it, because the ones I've brought are always leashed, always. No exception, no excuse. It's not fair to the best of the public, this dog, after their dog. I haven't seen the dog with Max's people that such a doggy is. Max does not know where his boundaries are. He sees those dogs, he's gone. Now, if you understand there's other instances from years on by with other dogs, it probably, probably just because they're a smart dog. But going out with dogs just on a rare way, it's not a good idea. And Bill would guarantee that dog is always going to be leashed. That would be great. It's just not, Bill is the one that's caring for that dog. Bill is the keeper of the dog, although Bill will lay it up. Whoever is responsible for the dog has to be the leash keeper. This can't happen again. It's not fair to the public, it's not fair to the dogs. And we've been very lenient on everything. This is the thickest fire we've ever had on a dog. And it's, we're trying to be very fair to Bill and Max. It's just, hopefully we come to a conclusion with the fence, the leash, the training, Bill understanding, that any numbers helping out, his contractor, the owner of the fence, that made us out. A letter saying, "Yeah, okay, we would go with it, but..." But these two people sitting in front of you, are they happy with that kind of decision? You know, that's, because they were affected by it. If that was my dog, I would have been attacked by Max, I would have been pissed off.
Well, part of it is...
Can you identify yourself?
Susan Hawkins.
Wait, before, are you done, John?
Yeah, go ahead.
Bill, I came, I came home, and Bill was in our driveway, and he just said, you know, "I want, I'm checking on the dog, and I want to make sure." And I'm like, "This is from the other attacker?" And he's like, "No, an attack again." And Pippa is two years old. She is a lover. I mean, anybody that knows lavender works, they'll will literally show you your belly and whatever. Eva is not a fighter either. I mean, the fact that she will not go near that area now is heartbreaking, because she is, she's traumatized. I had to tell another neighbor, call and say, "Don't take the grandkids down to the, to the pond area without your husband, to have an extra set of hands." Whether, you know, it is a dog issue, dog-on-dog issue, to go one step further, a kid gets in the middle of it, you know, David didn't get bitten, but if it was a young... It just, it would be a shame to have a tragedy happen. There are too many issues. So accountability, training.
Thank you. Erica, did you have some?
So, yeah, I know that the last hearing, that I spoke for Max, and again, I spoke with Bill when he came up a lot the other day. And I don't want anything too bad to happen to Max, and I don't want you to lose Max. But I am getting a bit frustrated, especially with some of the comments tonight. Because we have had issues where someone got in the middle, where she got in the middle and got bit by accident, but she got bit. And I am not comfortable and have not walked down my own road in months. Because I have a second dog now who's very reactive, hence why they're both on leashes. And at some point, my biggest fear is Max is going to come up. We've already had incidents where Debbie was walking the dog, and Max saw us and came looking at us. And I had to kick at Max, so he stayed away, because I had the second dog. And the second dog, in the meantime, slipped out of his collar. So I'm trying to grab him by the stuff of the neck, kick at Max so he doesn't come near my dogs. And God forbid, it's now got to the point where my first dog gets protective, not possessive, protective of the second dog. And if Max comes lunging, and he gets protective, it's just an accident waiting to happen, and I'm not willing to take that risk. Sorry. And I shouldn't have to worry about walking down my own road. I have to drive down to water to walk my dog. And, let me finish, please. It doesn't seem like anyone, that anyone is taking it seriously to the point where they realize that having a dog is a responsibility, and having a dog like Max is a bigger responsibility. And I don't, I know the neighbors that signed that, but I've heard comments from them, so I don't understand that. And there was another time where I was coming back from town hall, actually. I was talking to Jason about something when I was with the neighbor. And you were walking Max off-leash down the road, and I got home, and my dogs needed to go out. So I took them out, with the understanding that I knew Max was off-leash on that road. And no sooner did he get on the corner where the dogs go to bathroom, Max saw us and was dashing at us. And I had to grab my dogs and pull their leash into the house, and we went to the bathroom. And it's...
It was like walking.
You were walking down from Pond Street on, towards your house.
Yeah.
And I was driving down, from, coming back from town hall, got to my house, knew the dogs had to go to the bathroom. So I took them up to the bathroom and kept an eye, because I knew you guys were on the street somewhere. And he saw us and came dashing at us, and I rushed the dogs inside and pulled the bathroom closed.
You know, every life is a learning experience. And in your situation, you know, we had a real good relationship as neighbors. And as, and in addition to that, my dog and your dog, they played quite a bit. Never has it been a hassle, has it? Was there ever a fight where Max attacked your dog?
Nothing to attack, no.
Has he ever attacked your new dog?
No. Well, he did attack, and he came at us, yes.
Well, it's, how do you know that Max came to your dog and wanted to bite?
It doesn't matter. My dog was obviously reacting, and Max wasn't understanding that, and he wasn't under control.
All right, move it.
All right, before, we're directing comments to the board. I really don't, I understand the dynamic that's going on here. I think we, we understand it.
I want to say one thing. The unfortunate part for me is that I live on 139 Off Bond Street. And I pay taxes on people that are giving the right of way, I give the right of way, to walk on my property, drive back and forth. All right? There is a territorial situation out of this. I understand this, because my attorney just said, "Look into doing electric fence," okay? Back when we came for last meeting, Charlie had said I had a stroke, and then I had to go in for surgery. They had to jumpstart my heart, okay? And out of that jumpstart, I had a stroke, and they shocked my heart, I should say. I had a stroke, and then I had to go in for surgery. You know, thank God that basically the podiatrists and everybody was right there to play the game and making sure that I had a proper medication. Thank this knee replacement, because the pain was too excruciating to be not to have the operation. Unfortunately, I have to have this one. I'm going to work in a situation, okay? I understand that my dog, the German Shepherd dog, and the Sharon Shepherd dog have a reputation of being police dog, army dog, attack dogs, and everything else like that, it's always on the news. I understand that. A dog is wicked, wicked intelligent, and very obedient. You were sure, Charlotte C, that when I told Max to come here, he came right away.
And he hasn't gotten better, but there's been a lot of issues.
Okay.
It was probably the past issues.
So there was this issue where the, I think this, I'm going to turn around for a second. The back door, the, I don't know where it is, the back door. Max came onto my house, he got loose. Oh, our car. And there was a crack in the door. So Max got loose and came onto my house, my dogs went crazy. And I returned him. As I was, I returned him to the fence, and he was walking back up to...
It's a long time ago, which is different. It took like over a year.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, is there anybody else out there that would like to speak to something different? If not, I'm going to bring this back to the board. Kieran, would you like to speak to this?
I mean, I'm, I remember that hearing, and I went back and rewatched it too, and like, the hearing from, was it last August?
Yeah.
And here we are again. And like, it, that's a shame for, as someone who loves animals, I stop for every turtle I can. I have a dog myself, a shepherd as well, and like, he knows, you know, it's, I'm in charge. And sir, at some point, you've got to take that accountability for the animal. And I believe, you know, you've put us in a really tough situation as a town and as residents who are neighbors, just like yourself, walking up and down that street. Because I don't disagree that if an animal keeps going in, and you're having pedestrians and children on the street and trying to separate dogs, someone's going to get bit by accident. It's just inevitable. It is, like, it's just what happens. Like, it happens down in Boston Common all the time, happens down in Snyder's Neck in Harlem all the time, dogs getting scuffles and people put their hands in, and then someone's frustrated. I don't really know what to do, because you didn't listen to us last time. And I know you had some health impediments and things like that, and I totally empathize for that. But like you said, you are a family, and a dog is a family pet, and you haven't taken the steps to put a ten-foot fence in. I don't know, put a green monster in. I don't care. The dog can't get out. It's going to hurt somebody, or it's going to hurt yourself.
We did, I had my carpet idea, okay?
Great, but you had your carpenter last year too, sir. You had your carpenter last year. Where was he?
All right.
But...
All right, but what I want to say is one thing. All right, Max has grown quite a bit emotionally and mentally. You can understand that I went to the Chase Bank, a hot day, and I said to the banker, the executive banker at Chase Bank in Nashville, I says, "Look, can we make this quick?" Because it was an error in my account. They equipped my dogs in the car, and then she did, "Oh, bring them in." I says, "You sure? My dog's a German Shepherd." She says, "No, bring them in." So I had him on the leash, and I brought him in. And then she was just amazed by his behavior and his obedience to my commands. So let's stop at that point and say that he has grown quite a bit to the commands that I gave him. Stop, come here, and don't do that, okay? I'm wanting to turn around and, and as I said, I had a really triumphant year of my life, dragon argers. I had never had any type of situation that happened to dragon argers ever. To have a stroke, and then be totally, have to have my heart, I have to have a shock in my heart. And then from there, should I have the operation on my knee or not, because it's scheduled? Because I thought that the dog may not make it. So anyways, I did go with the operation, and basically I did have complications after the operation, but I'm here. So that's the reason probably I didn't get to do what we wanted me to do. I didn't want to quit, I did look into electric fence, and I think it's a good idea. And I will pursue that, and it will be up. At the same time, we're going to go to higher fence, and then I'll have that turned into a chain link fence. And I guess John spoke to my attorney and mentioned the recommendations of the type of chain link fence. So, you know, I feel very confident, my dog, and the way his behavior is, that he's not a killer, okay? And he, he, the gentleman that came onto my property, and I'll reiterate once more, he was, he came onto my property, and he was approaching my house, and then Max got excited. He ran up to the guy, didn't fight him, this is the utility man, didn't fight him, it's just kind of like scaring the guy, and just, "Come near the house." And I just told Max, "Stop, come here." And the guy, he went up like this to me, okay? So anyways, you know, as I say, he's two years old, and he's come a long ways, and he's got a lot where to grow. I got to go into an operation, it's going to happen, I got to put him in like a boarding school that trains dogs. This is in Milford, New Hampshire, and I think that he's going to be socializing with other dogs, and learn better behavior with other dogs, that's the case if he needs me.
The last hearing, with all due respect, the complaint did not show up. And Mr. Muldoon at this end, he thought that Max was falsely accused of injuring two pit bulls and a coagulant. That was, that was dismissed. You've got his attention now, he's here. We've got a plan, a hopeful mark, and I guess I'm just looking for, at this point, to implement it and to give you some time.
Well, just a...
Well, we need to finish the discussion among the board members. I'd like to hear from the police chief before Karen's done, yeah.
Why haven't you done it yet? What have you been waiting for? Why haven't you put, why haven't you just put the fence in? Soon as this happened, been like, "Oh shit, my dog's been another dog, I better stop this."
You have a contractor here who needs to...
But so it's a six-foot fence now? Is it a six-foot fence? I mean, right, like, why do you, why do you need to, like, what are you, what were you waiting for?
Well, you know...
I got three sets of eight, eight foot by six foot fences, I want to put up against that fence for now, okay? And then we're going to, shit, we're going to be getting that dog... We're gonna be the guy that's that dog, he got a little bit of hair. He needs room. We're gonna put a chain fence all the way around, let it get the dog. That will happen. Then that dog is so sweet, you guys, I don't know if we got a minute at all.
Oh, we have.
But that dog
Okay, okay, we're not doing that.
All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Chief?
My only concern with electric fences, uh, please, because I know, I understand what you said. There's a lot of electric fences. If they eat Max's skin on their property, unfortunately, they shouldn't do anything.
Correct.
Child or the contact or whatever. I just think a secure physical fence is
Thank you. Ron, do you have anything?
Um, I have, I have a couple of things. You know, first of all, for, excuse us, counselor and everybody else that's here. You should know to understand that each of us on this board have pets at home. We understand what that means to us with our families and ourselves. And, and so we have an appreciation of that. But counselor, Mr. Muldoon was here at the last hearing. And I'm gonna tell you, counselor, I specifically spoke to him that that dog needed to be excessively managed. And he assured us that would happen. Now, counselor, here's my, here's where this really goes bad for me and I think for my colleagues too. What's next? Is it gonna be a child? And if the cable guy jumped out and Max went over and bit the guy in the leg, all right? Or caused some emotional stress to this guy? Is, is that when this is gonna reach its tipping point? Counselor, there's, you can't, you know, I, I mean, I appreciate his health concerns. I'll tell you, if I had those health concerns, the last thing I would do is have a dog that's gonna create that anxiety for me. That dog would be at a farm someplace and I'd have something else in the house that I wouldn't be looking out the window. And, and, and he's, and, and you know, this, this need for medical attention? I mean, that dog may be unsupervised in the home, I have no idea. Um, but, but I'll tell you that, you know, the next time this happens, I, I don't know what to say to you, counselor. And, and I think if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, um, this is, this matter is really egregious to us. And I, I'm, this is, this is really bad. And I appreciate all the letters and all the people over there. But clearly, there is an issue in the neighborhood with these folks who feel concerned about their own safety. And that, that, that Mr. Muldoon may have some sort of lapse and the dogs out in the street going after somebody? You know, we, this, this, this is a really bad situation. And to select Miss Mian's concerns as well, honestly, this should have been addressed at the last time. We, we should not be having this hearing tonight on this matter, counselor. We take this stuff like you wouldn't believe because this is a matter of public safety. And God help us all, if some young child is attacked and the mother is trying to pull that dog off of a kid and, and we're gonna say, wow, the kid was just trying to pat the dog and he had a treat in his hand. That's just not, but counselor, this is an egregious matter. It really is. I, I'm, I'm sorry. This is well beyond anything that I want to take responsibility for in, in my days on this board. I, I, I don't.
I'm gonna say that my life was really downhill. Not only did I have a stroke, I also found I have black cancer, okay? And so my life has been running and trying to get myself backwards. Basically, I'm hanging in there and doing well. So out of this whole period, my whole life has been like a rush. But on the other hand, you gotta look at me and saying, what did I do with Max during that period of time? I taught him, okay? And he learned a lot from me. I gave him a lot of attention and he's very obedient and answers to my command. In these letters that we presented to you, it's presenting by in the public. And also there's children involved. Max has never, people will say that Max is people friendly. People friendly. And you can assume that he's gonna attack another dog, I mean, another person. But he's not friendly. Any dog, I go by and I go into my neighborhood, I go even to Erica's house, okay? I mean, good dogs are at the window screaming and yelling and barking. And everybody else is when I go to their door and say hi to somebody, they're all screaming and barking. Good luck if someone opens the door, what's gonna happen? I'm gonna get attacked, okay? Every dog has territorial and every dog has a protection field. This particular lineman that came on, came onto my property, was approaching my door. And my dog, you know, turned around and said, hey, stop. I had a situation with a German Shepherd where I was a landlord. And basically, I had to addict a guy from my house, my, my building in Chelmsford. And basically speaking, the guy was out there killing at two o'clock in the morning. My dog saved my life, okay? So that's what the German Shepherd's like. My dog he won't attack the children. I, I have pictures of my dog playing with kids, okay? So, you know, you can turn around and say, oh, he's gonna do this, this, this. And I agree with your concern. But at the same time, I spent a lot of time with this dog. And he is, he's wanted in his intelligence and his obedience to, to be a good dog. Anybody will tell you that he's a good dog.
Okay. Um, one more thing that I would like to speak to.
I just have one more thing, just for the record, counselor. I know you were not at the last hearing. But at the last hearing, the, um, plaintiffs, the, the plaintiffs, okay? Did not come. And I'm gonna tell you, quite frankly, I understand that. These folks are all neighbors. And if you know that area or constable, it's a close-knit neighborhood. And, you know, those folks didn't come to this hearing. You know, these folks don't like confrontation. They're coming here tonight because they're deeply concerned. Most people, except lawyers, don't like confrontation. But, you know, they're here tonight to, to express their concerns. And that hearing of the last time was, was dismissed based on the fact that the plaintiffs didn't come. And, and I'm very, I understand that clearly and I motioned to dismiss that. But I also understand why they wouldn't come because they just don't want to get into this. And these folks are here tonight. That in of itself tells me how significantly concerned they are about this matter.
We're not looking to confront them or
Okay, no, I get that.
And that was the plan. I mean, we came here with a plan.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no training, equal restraint, increased security. Let's talk about an electric fence in addition to, like, we're trying to open the plan to present to everyone, not just to you. We're not trying to argue with the neighbors or
Well, Max
A lot for Max too, so he's safe. But to keep him confined and so he can't get out, we're gonna increase the fence. We'll go to the chain link, training. These are all things. And you balance that against the wellbeing of Mr. Muldoon and, you know, the benefits he and his family get from having Max around. If you can control him, which we believe we can, and the message has been sent loud and clear. I, I wasn't here at that last meeting, but I watched it today, so I, um, you know, me a couple, we didn't do anything. But there were some medical issues. It was dismissed, you know, for many reasons. And I understand what you're saying, why the plaintiffs might not have shown up. But they're here and I've talked to the dog off of Amherst Cross or I've talked to someone. We were working to get a plan together and I think we have it. And I'm just looking for a way to implement it. Um, if you make one decision today, you might be bound in the future. That's why I'm suggesting perhaps continuing, see if this works out. You have all your options. You can do dangerousness, you can do nuisance. You can do a lot of things, but at least you'll see what happens. But the message has been sent loud and clear at this point. And we have a plan and we're just looking to see if we can implement it.
this is a very, very frustrating situation. I'm, I'm actually, I'm quite, I'm disappointed that we're back here. I'm also glad that we're back here. I understand you've been working with your dog, but there have been three incidences since that time. It's terrifying when your pet, family member, pet, is attacked by another dog, no matter what the circumstances are. I live in a family compound where there are 10 dogs, seven little kids under the age of nine. Um, I'm well aware of little tufts, little conflicts here and there. I've been involved with the Low Humane Society for, for 50 years. I'm well aware of animal interactions, dog interactions. I have a dog that is dog-friendly, terrified of men, fine with women. I have to manage that. I don't blame her. I've taken her through her many classes. I've done the same thing. I've been to every pet-friendly store up there because there's just something in her nature that she's just terrified of men. Obviously, Max has some trigger for some dogs. I find that completely normal. It's not unusual. He seems, by all accounts, seems to be fine with people. I'm not so worried about Max. I'm worried about the owner. This is an owner responsibility. This is the owner's the situation has created these little tragedies, which are gonna build up unless something continues to happen. I see you raising your hand, but it's my time to speak right now, okay? I don't want to deem this dog to be labeled something in particular. I certainly am not looking for euthanasia. That is not a path I'm going down. I don't believe that's, we have not discussed this as a board. That is not, that's not the appropriate answer. I get what a dog means in someone's lives, especially where, you know, I believe you are living alone or, I mean, I'm not sure that your son is living with you, but
It's not
Okay. I mean, dogs are integral in, in people's lives, absolutely. Um, I don't want to disrupt that. But you need to be fully accountable for every movement of this dog. Not 95% of the time. That 5% has resulted in some potentially very dangerous situations. No person may have been the target. I don't blame the dog for protecting his property. You know, I, you know, the guy that walked on the property. In my mind, he probably was doing his job. He saw a stranger come onto his land, went to investigate, whatever. I've had my dogs do the same thing. In fact, I've had my dog take down a friend of mine because they came half an hour early and I didn't have him in. Understood, he did his job. Could have been someone I didn't know. So I get it. I don't want to disrupt that. But Mr. Muldoon needs to be doing everything, everything, to keep this dog away from other dogs. I, the six-foot fence, that's fantastic. I would like to see the entire yard fenced, six feet fenced, so that every door leads into a fenced area. I know you spoke, I see you folks. I will get to you when I'm done talking, okay?
They do, so
Every door should lead to a fenced area. I know you spoke before that you have a double door, that you have a storm door and he opens one and then you have to control him before the next door goes out. So there's a, I don't care. That second store, door is leading to the great wide open. That should not be the case. My yard is entirely fenced in. I tell you, it's a pain in the ass to get in and out of my car every single time. I open the gate, drive through, get out, blah, blah, blah. Especially when it's icy, I hate it. But I love my dogs and I want them safe as much as I want everybody else in the neighborhood safe.
Would you like me, would you like me to build a fence around my whole property?
That's what I would like to see. Then, and make it tall, that slatted wood, I don't trust that, chain link.
There's a right-of-way. I'm gonna have to try, there's a right-of-way.
Is, is there a right-of-way between his front door and the fence?
No, no, that, no, his property is a side, a bit of a ass.
Well, then you fence in around your house.
That side of my house is a right-of-way. Everybody, I'm the first house on Off Palm Street. Everybody, mind me, with 10,000 crossover, the back, back side of my property.
Well, then put the fence on the inside of that. Every door should lead to a fenced-in area, period. So if he slips out, he can't go anywhere.
So how about we define, they'll say, make a plan on this construction and I have John come over and give him the approval. Have John come in, say, this is what I'm doing and is this satisfactory with the town?
That's, I'm sorry, that's not gonna be the responsibility of the dog officer. That's, that's really your job.
Well, we'll assume responsibility. We're just trying to work the property.
Yeah, I, I, we're not, I mean, you're asking our dog officer to take responsibility for the, for the peripheral management of your dog. We can't do that.
I have an hearing and, you wanna, what do you want, a stockade fence around my house?
Something the dog cannot jump over. Dogs are, my sister has a mini labradoodle, can jump a four-and-a-half-foot fence. This is a large German Shepherd. They are agility dogs. They can do, they could jump that easily. And those boards, I mean, chain link, I think would be an appropriate measure. I'm not a fan of electric fence. I've had them before. My dogs go through and they wouldn't come back. And because they're not paying attention to that beep or the zap when they are heightened and they are on something. Um, these were Boston Terriers I had many years ago. But once, once they, once they calm down and want to come back, that's when they're, now they're afraid to come back into the yard.
Are you suggesting no to the chain link or yes?
I personally would like the chain link.
Okay, yeah.
I'm talking electric, the electric fence. But that's my personal preference.
We just want to solve the problem and I really appreciate, uh, Mr. Hawkins was gracious enough to indicate, you know, he doesn't want the dog euthanized, doesn't want to remove. He's not even interested in deeming dangerous since what happened.
We have the right to have the dog removed anyway, though it's not
He just wants the dog restrained, which will certainly be the case. But then more importantly, the fence, we can do that.
I want that 5% sealed, right? You're saying 95% of the time, the dog is under your control. That 5% is where we're seeing problems. This is where I see probably four-and-a-half of a percent being fixed, is having the dog in a fenced-in area entirely in your yard. And any moment that you leave that yard, you or someone else who is there, are you his grandson?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe he's in your, dog's in your name?
Uh, I, I purchased a dog, a year ago, I bought him, but I had too much stuff in my brain. I couldn't take care of it, so I sold it to him. So it's technically his dog now. I come there, I see the dog, I
Do you live in the same house?
No, I, I have a house. I go to his house and we made
So you could be the one that if he's impaired physically from his knees
No, I, I took the dog, I have a dog, I don't trust the shot, all of them.
No.
I don't trust that crap. I, I have a dog, a leash.
No, there's nothing like a physical constraint, yes.
Every time a car comes by, I'm swatting them, I can hold the dog back. Or if a person's walking down the street, I can hold it back.
Yeah.
Make sure it doesn't move off, you know, like
I just want to, just, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Just so you're aware, sir, this is your grandfather?
Yeah.
He has, he has told the town, you own the dog. And he's communicated that to us. No, I'm sorry, you have, all right? And just for the record, he, that's what he has said to us. Without regard, in my opinion, as to who really, who owns the dog is gonna be a matter of who's gonna take liability and some kids in the hospital. I don't know how that's gonna shake out. And I'm gonna tell you, we take this seriously. And based on everything that we've had here tonight, I remain deeply concerned that we are gonna have an event that is not gonna be desirable for us. And, and I, you know, I don't care if the fence is 30 feet high and it's got barbed wire over it. The truth is, when he takes that dog for a walk, the dog and him can't keep pace with each other. And he's inclined to either lose the leash or the dog's gonna pull him down or something's gonna happen here and his health is not the best. Boy, I'll tell you, the anxiety that dog brings me, and if I had those health conditions, that dog would be out the door. And that's how I see it. It's, this is a really, you guys were all here last year. Here we are a year later, rinse and repeat, same thing, same problem, all kinds of reasons why I'm not, I'm not, I'm not convinced. I think our board needs to take action here and declare this dog, according to the Commonwealth's Regulations, as a dangerous dog, so that Mr. Muldoon and counselor is gonna take this extremely seriously and own the liability if that dog attacks a child. How sad is that gonna be? And then we're gonna have all kinds of stories as to why that happened. I'm not gonna, I'm not going there with that.
We are taking it seriously. That's why we're coming here, this is where John said he's hurt.
That's great. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna add some teeth to this, okay? And, and, and we're, I'm gonna ask our board to, to declare this dog a dangerous dog so that you guys are gonna understand the consequences of your actions if you don't or have another event like this again. You own this. You ultimately and solely are responsible for the actions of that dog. And the fact that he went after a lineman or a utility worker and the guy gave you a thumbs up, he's going thumbs up. He might just as well have blessed himself and said, thank God, all right?
Well, I agree with what it is.
Yeah.
Are you doing a nuisance, or continue it, or...
No, no, I'm not. I'm not. I'm not gonna...
If I'm watching on someone's porch and the dog is almost trying to break through the door to get to me, would that be a dangerous dog? I think that that dog is protecting somebody, you know, protecting the home. My dog turned around and, on this utility man, basically, all I said, "Max, come here." And he was... That thumbs up on his hand, he's a very well-behaved dog.
Why was Max out of your question at the time he went after the utility man? He wasn't on a leash at that point, correct? And your yard was not fenced in? So, I mean, that's the concern we have, is that one... That split second that the dog gets out the door, and whatever his trigger is, it's the fact that he has the ability to act on that trigger. That's what concerns me, be it a dog or anybody else. No one wants anybody hurt. But he should not have been in that situation to be able to even run at that lineman. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes. And I can say this. I was in the insurance business. I retired from having an insurance agency for 55 years. And I know how the insurance companies act on German shepherds. I can say that I have a homeowner's policy. There hasn't been any action against the insurance company to say, "Well, you can't say no." Because, basically, they seen the dog. They even inspected my property. And they seen the dog as, you know, calm. Then, you know, I turned around and, you know, I... I've worked and worked and worked with Max, and he's well-behaved. You know, I've seen him around children, and he doesn't attack... I have a ladder field, and there's more dogs that go after Max at ladder field, and Max just sits there and looks at them, you know? My daughter, who was here, will attest to that. She says, "Oh, it's nice." I think that they may start to be... But anyways, you know, Max is important to my life.
I understood. We are well aware of that.
There are more ways to find.
Understood.
And I'm not gonna jeopardize my life, okay? In the sense that I'm gonna make a error, all right? I have full confidence in Max and how I handle Max. I think Erica would tell you that, you know, Max was well-behaved. When I... You saw him on the trail when I called him. Were you answering me on that one? Did you see when I called Max and he came right to me and you said, "Wow, he has improved"? Oh, that's very funny.
So, I hear your point, sir.
There was a situation where I was surprised that Max responded and went back.
And he does that all the time. In the bank's office, I mean, there was the same situation.
We understand, okay? I don't want to keep belaboring the same points over. We understand. I mean, obviously, his triggers are not people.
I just want to say one thing, and I'm done. I'm gonna say one P.O. and then... On the first incident, when that happened with Sharon's house, you know, I'm contesting that. Unfortunately, I went to court on this. And it was all in Trevor, you know, the judge... I mean, the magistrate was looking at Trevor. And I wanted to speak up, because I had pictures and proof that Max did not cause that injury to her dogs. Unfortunately, his uncle paid $1,000 just to keep the neighborhood calm with Sharon. So, I had pictures, and I have an idea to show that Max could not possibly go in and attack her dog.
I remember those from last time.
Okay. So, I need to get to the court and rearrange this. I need to get an attorney. And I talked... Have I talked to you about this? Well, that is something...
It's disgusting.
Yeah. So, you know, this is a situation where he got blamed for something that he really didn't do. You know, I don't know if John saw the situation or not, but basically, I think a lot of people said, "There's no way that your dog did it." And at that time, Max was a puppy, you know? So, you know, they made out financially on me, and I don't know whether, why they didn't come or not. But, you know, mainly speaking, I am gonna bring this back into the court because this is... This was... And their boyfriend was... He was enticing me to give them money instantly, blaming Max without proving anything that Max did it. No one... There's no cameras. No one saw Max do it. How could Max go through chicken wire to get the dead dog? The dead dog must have... Pitbulls must have chased Max and tried to get to Max, and he cut himself in the fence. And that's how I see it, and I present that to the judge. You know, I'm done.
So, my parting thought, and I remember this parting thought from last August, was, you know, the first incident that the Hawkins reported happened on May 1st this year. You haven't done anything differently in your behavior since then. Have you... You haven't done anything differently since then?
Yeah, I worked on that.
But then it happened again two weeks later. Then there was a second incident, 25 days later, on May 26th. And here we... So, I appreciate all your stories and the community outreach, and those that have attested to Max's good behavior. But you haven't changed your course of action. And that, I'm with Ron. I'm deeply concerned that there'll be an incident here that is of greater magnitude, because you're not changing... You're not taking a left turn here or something. You're not hearing us, or you're not seeing us, and how frustrating this is for us as a board.
There was two incidents with Hawkins, and there was initially an incident on the trail that, basically, you know, Max was a puppy, that he got attacked.
Right.
But on this situation...
You haven't put up a fence. You could have put a fence up May 2nd. If this happened, if my dog bit another dog, would have been May 2nd, calling the Gate City Fence, put a fence in, keep him going.
Max is always on a leash, you know?
How are we guaranteed that? How are we going to guarantee that that is going to happen? I mean, we asked you. We didn't have any power to force you to do anything last time. We asked you emphatically to make changes so that we did not have to do this again. And here we are, after three more incidences. And as I explained, you know, it's 50% responsibility of Max's behavior and 50% yours, at least. It's your. Your actions are the one, or lack of actions, are the one that's concerning me, not so much the dog's. We can explain away some of the dog's behavior. And even though you have some commands that are stopping the dog, there are some commands that are not stopping the dog. So this dog, for your safety, as well as some of the dogs that are triggering Max, their safety, and to ward off any situation, this dog needs to be, unfortunately, constrained at all times. With the fence, we have no other way in which to make this happen. We can ask you... I'm not sure what the continuance does. That does not give us any, you know, enforcement authority.
Then perhaps, if you're gonna deem him something, maybe a nuisance, that gives you the flexibility to impose conditions to ameliorate the cause. We're just offering to do exactly what this dog has asked for. If the dog ended and falls on a leash, that could very easily be deemed a nuisance. If you feel you must deem him something tonight, you can deem him a nuisance, and then perhaps impose conditions on the fence, leash at all times. And that's exactly what the layman's asking for. That's what we're offering.
Did you want to say one final thing, please?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if there's any way that we can prove to you guys that the dog can stay restrained on a leash or something, like, you know, more than one, or more than two guys or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we enforce that, but you have a bit of a neighborhood watch. So I think that...
I think proof is not... I'm gonna do this again. Because the third time is a dance I don't really wanna do.
Well, you deemed a nuisance, and there's conditions that you put a fence up and he'd be leashed. If there's a complaint that he was unleashed, right back, then you can deem him a danger. You can do a lot of things. I'm just looking for some sort of compromised middle ground. I understand it. I'm reading the room. You don't wanna just carry this over. But then perhaps, you have some teeth, by way of deeming a nuisance dog. It doesn't involve all the conditions of a dangerousness, but at least you can impose conditions, which is what the layman's asking for, which is what we're offering.
Can I ask a question?
So... Yeah. Because we gotta read... I wanna read these things to this guy. So that he can understand what's going on.
Maybe you have a question.
Yes, Erica?
So you mentioned that you have a plan to put the fence up?
Yes.
Exactly. You mentioned something about September. Is that when that was supposed to be up?
He's having... Well, he had a contractor here that seemed willing to do something immediately.
We could increase the height of the fence. I don't think that's going to...
No, but we can... We dictate these things.
Yeah, that's where this comes into play.
Four feet is not high. And I really... I mean, it's gotta surround every door.
That's where we're at.
Yeah, I'm closer to a nuisance than a dangerous dog. I know there's, to the counselor's point, there's an evolution of things here. And again, I really don't want there to be a... Like, I'm... When I saw this pop up, I was like, "Come on, really?" Like... And then to hear there has been no action since this Hawkins incident, that's always categorized, that's the name I'll give it, but...
We can do this, you know?
Just kind of frustrate you.
Where?
Many think...
That's not an emotion.
No, you can change it.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, these are the things I want. So you spoke the dog's gonna have training. So the dog's gonna have training. Another big part of the training of an animal is the owner having a training. Because often, it's done together. You need to... He may be trained one way, and you may be trained another way, and you may not fully communicate. I mean, I think it's great he's gonna be boarded and have training done there, but there should be more training, you and the dog together. So you're learning to communicate with your dog. You know, it's not just you send him off to boarding school and he comes back, and then you undo all of the things he learned there.
You know, I'm thinking of postponing my surgery.
Yeah.
Getting him to take the... Take the training that he needs. My main concern is the fact that he's had a couple of dog fights, and some of these dog fights have been initiated by other dogs. And so, as a dog, when I initially trained Max, he was more or less socializing with other dogs. And he played with every dog, not necessarily in my neighborhood. I have some people from Kings Row that attest that they have dogs and they socialize with Max. And it's never been an issue until Max got beat up a couple of times. And it's in his head, I need to get somebody to socialize with Max with their dogs, or a whole bunch of dogs, like Doggy Care or Dog Pet Care or something like that. There's a whole bunch of things where they work with dogs and socialize with other dogs. They have a daycare place, place them. I will look into everything to make this thing happen. I need my dog because of my help. And my son needs it. He's a disabled vet, and Max is at his house because, you know, my son is at my house because he needs to be with me now.
I understand. I mean, it's a very important, special relationship that we have with our pets. I... And we... I don't want that to go away, you know? I want you to be able to keep your dog, but I want your neighborhood to feel safe with their dogs as well. They want to keep their dogs. They want to keep their dogs healthy and safe. And it's your responsibility, every one of you, responsibility to take those steps, to make sure your own dogs are healthy and safe. And it's very crowded down there, you know? Off Palm Street, there's a lot of people, a lot of dogs in a small area. You're bound to have confrontations. You're gonna have confrontations between yourselves, let alone your dogs. You know, it just happens. Some dogs just don't get along with other dogs. So you have to manage that behavior. It's a fact. You have to manage that behavior.
I totally agree with you. And I just want the board to consider that, you know, where I'm coming from, and, you know, I'm a guy that, basically, running a business in a responsible type of business, that I take responsibility. You know, as Mr. Hawkins said, I went over and checked out to see how he's doing and his dog. My dog never attacks him, by the way, and even though he was kicking my dog. But what I do want to say is, give me a chance to turn around and make this thing a right way, you know? And I will make it happen, you know? And, I mean, basically, I depend on my dog because of my hearing. I take these out, and I don't care nothing.
Well, I have them too. I understand the hearing aid thing.
And if I have them, I still have a hard time picking up every word he is saying. So, he's been trained to turn around and help me in many ways that I have. And basically, I'll make this thing happen, and I'm sure that the neighborhood, you know, could be able to come by and, you know, there won't be an issue with my dog, you know?
He's drafting a motion. He needs a couple of minutes.
Okay.
We're just gonna take a couple of minutes here, and the town administrator is drafting a motion, and we're gonna read that motion into the record as soon as he comes back, counselor.
Is Max neutered?
That's a good question. He was supposed to be neutered after last summer, and I was having these issues. And he is gonna be neutered. I made arrangements with the... That's my envelope.
So you have an appointment for that? Do you recall the date? Do you recall the date of that?
It depends on, you know, I'm gonna see if I can postpone my surgery. Because obviously, when he gets neutered, he has this big coma on his head, and that takes a lot of care, but...
They cover pretty quickly.
I did talk to the Carol Lee Smithville Clinic. She mentioned that neutering would serve two purposes. And I agree that we had to do it. And I did have it set up. He did the blood test and everything, and ready to have the situation happen. I had to postpone it because of my doctor. But that's a good question. That was part of it. If you're willing to have him neutered as soon as possible, we do that. If we're going to have him neutered, uh, as soon as possible, I would do that.
That will, that will help.
Just consider, as soon as she can set it up, what I will do.
Did you have a child yet?
Not yet. Hasn't grown. He's only forty pounds or so. I was waiting to wait.
Yeah.
She's like, well, he should have grown faster than that. She's like, start beating him more. He's got almost like two cups of water a day. Also, almost three. He just started getting, so I was like, if you get to bring him up a bit, I'd be like- He loves seven years old.
Oh, so maybe-
Yeah. Oh, he's been good, so I'll throw the ball back before he stops, like, if I can go there.
Yeah.
Even with, like, um, it's Peter's bike thing?
They've got three.
They've got three, but she's like, hey, I'll give you a heads up when, like, on the chariot. And I'll get a, I'll get a fence, so it doesn't, I'll get off, like-
Have you met Lori? She's about the size of your mother.
So cute.
May I say that, may I say something that, you know, this, this surgery, yeah, she is terrible. I mean, it takes a long time to deal with it. So I have to have a left knee done and obviously, I'm very apprehensive about doing it, you know? And, uh, so it's been, geez, I don't think I'm gonna do it. To the point where I have to do it because of the pain that I'm going through. To reduce the pain, you give him the, uh, Ozempic shots, that's how it should, yes, indeed. But I'd be willing to postpone this surgery until probably November, December, January, if you get all of the things done.
Well, I would expect some of this done before September. We will be putting dates by which this stuff needs to be done. You know, obviously, the training is a process. The fence-
You would say that's a good idea, so you can postpone it.
Well, you know, you want us to put that in there? Yes.
I need an excuse not to do it.
Yeah.
I understand.
And no more, can you, you can? Yeah, that is the, yeah, yeah. He says he's-
I'm not dating, yeah.
He said he didn't have an appointment yet, but he's been, gone through the process.
Thirty days? You got it done? Yeah, we'll get it done, I'm sure. So we need to tag us.
Yeah.
When do we want the fence in?
Yeah, the fence needs to be in.
I'm gonna change that to three months.
Okay, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Um, you wanna put that, that's a better idea. For the fence.
Two weeks, August first.
Yeah.
When?
Yeah, call dates any more.
Well, he has a contractor, he said-
August thirty?
August first.
August first? No, it's August first.
Yeah. I mean, everyone's out walking their dogs. I mean, that is for, to protect his dog, but also the neighbors. And if people are out wandering around, school's not in session.
About one and two. There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, this is gonna be a directive from the board by motion and we're gonna read this into the record. I move to declare the dog residing at 139 off Pond Street, known as Max, as a nuisance dog in that the dog's owner be ordered to take the following remedial actions and to notify the dog's owner in writing of such action. One, chain link fencing surrounding all egresses of the house at a minimum of six feet to be completed on or before August 1st, 2025. Two, rectifying all access, access points for escaping the property with a chain link fence. Three, training for the dog and owner by a reputable trainer approved by the animal control officer, which shall begin no later than August 1st, 2025 and be complete by October 31, 2025. And the dog's owner must provide evidence of the training upon completion. The dog must be on a leash with a 300-pound pencil strength tethering device and muzzle whenever the dog is off the property, off the owner's property, under the control of an adult. Four, uh, five, in warning signs posted on the property regarding the dog. Six, that the dog be neutered no later than 30 days from this date. And further, to, to move to have the dog owner appear before the select board no later than three months from this date. Uh, second.
Is there any further discussion?
No, we're gonna do a roll call vote because it's a hearing. What's the matter?
That's fine, we can do that. All right, all those in favor, roll call?
Ron Michael, aye.
Leah Basmain's aye.
Hearing me an aye.
Ananamous, thank you. Okay, there we are.
A motion to adjourn this year?
I would entertain a motion to adjourn this year.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back at it. Removal of the Norway spruce trees in front of the town hall. Go ahead and take them! Um, yeah, so those trees are huge. They're getting very big. They're sort of drowning out the town hall and the splendor and beauty of our Saro Robi memorial town hall and the brick work that's been restored. Um, they are touching the building and the corners there, so, um, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm always, being the tree hugger that I am, I'm sad to see any tree be taken down, but in the circumstances, I think it's appropriate. Thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, they're overgrown. Would it replace them with a light tree?
Put something else there. We haven't had any recommendations, but I'm sure-
A geranium.
Fuck, please. Maybe the Simmons Greenhouse will donate a mom.
What was the total quote? Did it include, like, stumping and everything like that? I just-
I don't, I don't even have a quote. I haven't got that far. I figured, get your thoughts on it before you're moving on it.
Do we need a motion this time?
If you wanna make one, there's no harm. Does anybody out there have any comments on the removal of the two Norway spruce trees in front of the building?
Erica?
Me?
I think the only time those trees look good is when they get snow on them, on the map.
Yeah, especially this one. This one is a little tired.
That's huge, yeah.
It's huge. You, you know the two trees on the corners?
Oh, can't miss them.
They're getting good, yeah.
So it'd be great to replace them with something native or another pine tree or evergreen of sorts.
Something that doesn't grow so big.
Yeah. Does our, my one question is, does the little Christmas folks that dress up at town hall, do they use that tree?
No, no.
Oh, they don't, right?
They're too big. I was thinking we should cut them and use them for the Christmas tree in the, in the bandstand, but-
So I'll move that we allow the town administrator to remove the Norway spruce trees at town hall.
Do you know how to use a chainsaw?
I will give you a saw, but I wanna see you pass, read out.
Have you taken chainsaw safety class, Maya?
Yeah, yeah, call mine.
All right, uh, did you check on that? All's in favor?
Aye.
Really? What was there before? They gave, I mean, and all of those trees?
Have they been there forever?
Sarah planted those.
They weren't, no, Alan Chaney remembers who, of course, remembers everything, but he remembered who planted them. They were like thirty, forty years ago or something, so then-
They put the good life, I mean, they, yeah. I mean, they'll probably cut them in the fall, usually the best time to cut trees, but-
Well, we're getting rid of these.
I know, just like the, the birds will be there till the fall.
They come out, they're gone.
Yeah, they'll be, end of August, we'll be out.
Do what you gotta do.
Yeah, yeah.
Have bonfire out back. We, we used to bring trees down the larder and have a big bonfire.
Yeah.
Did we used to do that back?
Yeah.
Christmas. Yeah, a lot of field, tree barns.
Where?
Behind the back, a tree room.
Oh, I remember that.
Oh, you know what? I think that was just some sort of Kermit garden, but they had like a tree family. It was in the morning, it was in the morning, it was humorous.
No. I don't remember that. Okay. Good, um, town hall featured artist mural.
Wow, looks great now.
Didn't even notice it.
Thank you.
Yeah, you painted it?
I did that, yes.
It was awesome.
That was my project last Sunday.
Listen, I felt guilty, I, I didn't notice myself on Monday.
I didn't notice until you told me that and I'm like, holy cow. That's great.
There isn't one. So it's where the, where the corkboard used to be, where he used to put-
Now look at it now.
Look at it now.
We have fixed it.
I fixed it.
It looks nice.
It looks real.
But we had discussed earlier about what to do with that spot and we're like, oh, maybe we should have, you know, artists put stuff up there, which we can still do, you know? That, that- Yeah.
Picture of her hugging the tree.
She's right there, yeah. I don't know, she likes being high and look over us. So, anyway, there's just a temporary map put up there now, but if we wanna, I mean, there are a lot of ours in town, but we would have to probably do a little bit more-
Temporary map?
Security.
Yeah, yeah, we are. I'll still defer to screen, a monitor of some sort for things that are going on at town.
That costs money.
What about all the 350, you have the 350. What about all the town photos? They're kinda hidden in that one. But if, but, oh, for people to see them.
I guess now that we have made it pretty again, we can look and see what we have, like, around here that we could repurpose.
Yeah.
We can do like a call to artists and see if people wanna do like that. If everyone's okay with that, do something like that.
Do that, $200 LG video screen. You can just smart, like, literally just write, like, put that, like, it's a space where you can advertise, water shed, you know, whatever.
Has anybody seen, do you ever come over the Chains Row Bridge from, like, the other side?
Yeah, and they've got that fake word wall thing.
They have a big sign right on the corner and get, we need that there, it's not so big.
Meeting tonight.
It's a digital sign, prime signs, you still push that?
You can, you know it, John, I'm very consistent.
I don't want a digital sign in all of it.
I don't want a digital sign.
I don't know.
Nah.
I'll come in on a Sunday to teach you. And then I'll just be running out of program. You can just run it off iFive, it's so easy. And you could just run through photos.
You know what's easy too? Paintings, yeah.
Welcome to the 20 seconds.
All right. So we don't really need to discuss that. Update on 473 High Street. So, looks like we will not be exercising our right to purchase that property. Um, CPC, there was an application put forward to the Community Preservation Committee and after long debate and review, we basically came to realize that, one, we don't have time, we don't really have the resources and the bandwidth to be potentially sitting on a structure for a period of time, nor would we have any way to sort of meet the request that the, um, potential landowner wanted, which was to give him an extra lot. So you can't just give him an extra lot to make a project happen, to restore the building. So CPC, um, voted to not accept the, to not approve the application. So I think that is the word back to this board is that we will not be going forward with this.
No action.
Correct.
Is Ann, uh, is Ann supposed to be possibly with the, uh-
Yeah, she's gonna, she's gonna try to set something up next Tuesday to talk to Mr. Larkin. You know?
Just need a motion.
See what happens. Well, probably, I mean-
But if you, if you want to, it wasn't on here as a vote, but if you wanted to, um, you can either let, I, I believe, you could either let August 15th come through or you could vote tonight to, um, not exercise hereby the first refusal.
Either way, Simon, please.
I would just assume vote it through and get, I mean, August 15th is, you know, a month away. Let those people understand that, uh, this is the path forward. And if there's nothing else, and, and I'm in agreement, I, you know, I think Tiffany Norton summed it up really well in the email that she wrote to the board. I mean, I, I, and I've been up there and looked at this place, I, I, it is what it is, but I think that Leah is, um, well founded in that. We're just gonna pass on this and for the record, I'll move.
Now, before you go there, did you have a quick question?
Uh, sorry, it kind of goes back to earlier where I really should have spoken up, but sorry about that. So happy to hear about the High Street one. My concern now is, I know you guys just approved it for the conservation to spend the $1,900 legal fees on possible purchase of another piece of land and-
This, all right, before you, I know the path you're going down. That parcel, it's a one and a half acre parcel. An anonymous donor has given the money of $3,000 for this piece of land that is entirely surrounded and was offered to us by the property owner to purchase this land.
And it's not buildable, right?
Correct.
At all?
No.
No. We're marked.
Okay, is it currently bringing in any property taxes?
I can't imagine how.
I mean, I, I honestly don't know.
Deminimus.
I just don't know, I don't know if you mentioned to know what I put together.
I have, I have not, yeah.
All right, this doesn't really relate to this.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't, but I can bring it up at another point in time.
Okay, I'm okay, so I'll move.
I had one thing, so Joan is right, Ann is trying to schedule a meeting with the owner. I think we are-
Tuesday, yeah.
So the only thing, I think, could be an option. I don't know how important, but the, basically, the home is to the town. But Leah did mention if the town wanted to, if it was a priority to preserve that, the owner has said informally, not anything formal, but informally has said, well, we may be able to do that if, and the if at this point was if you allow me to build another home on that 11, is it? 11 acres. So that's really the only, as we kind of, or as Ann has the conversation with the owner about what to do, will you preserve it, et cetera. It'd be helpful to have guidance from the board on, is that an option or not? Is, or is it more important to preserve the open space? Is it more important to preserve the home? Would the select board be interested or open to taking a position or working with the prospective owner to support a request by the ZVA to, for variance if he was willing to preserve the home? That's the question.
Because like, sort of two different questions, right? Like, one is, it, it, what, sorry, maybe I'm, I'm sorry, is it two different questions, right? One is to, you know, let him support the ZVA to give him another lot, which we know is a pipe, kind of a pipe dream and not really our- One is to, you know, let him support the ZDA to give him another lot, which we know is a pipe, kind of a pipe dream and not really our purview.
There's no hardship.
The second option is, or the second question is just trying to find a way to encourage CPA to revoke the preservation of that building?
No, I wasn't going on that.
Okay, all right, so I'm.
I was more saying, the hardship with the ZDA application would be unpreserving the building and it's, and it's a priority for the town and work for the town and it's gonna cost me a whole load more money in order to do that. And because the town has made that a priority, the only way I can do that is to build another home to make a profit, basically to make the project profitable.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the question is, would the town through the select board be open to that? Or is it more of, look, we want you to preserve the home, it's a priority for the town, but you're gonna need to do it within the confines of what you can actually go through without variance.
I would like to have a conversation with him first to see if how serious he is about either of those.
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Do you wanna wait on this motion?
Yeah, there's no harm in.
Absolutely not.
Like, so long as, I mean, I'm pretty adamant that CPA funds don't go towards this.
Right.
Because of the other sizable projects we have that we're looking at, is that, you know, there's no worries. Just to make sure of.
Because that's the other opt, the, the only other option we could support the preservation is to use CPA money to like help restore it and put the preservation restriction on the property. Right?
Right, but not to do the restoration, yeah.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
And this is why that, getting a report that said exactly how contractor historian would have evaluated it was gonna be so important.
I understand, it just doesn't, it just doesn't roll that way.
I hear you.
I mean, up to this point, what, what I, the feeling I got is that it wasn't really an interest to go for the town, for the town to support a variance request like this and it wasn't really an interest to use CPA funds for this. Right. So that, but I just wanted to like.
Yeah, it'd be optional.
Yeah.
Okay, now, fair enough.
Cool, yeah, cool, thank you.
That's it?
I have a couple of things.
All right.
Just, just so that I have some clarity while we're all here. Did, did we respond to Michael Sullivan's request? Has this guy got an email back from the board?
I, he got acknowledgement email, I believe. I, I'd have to go check to confirm, but.
You and I talked about this.
We did, we did.
Yeah.
A while ago, yeah.
I just, when I go through my email, I don't see anybody writing this guy back saying, look, here's the disposition of this.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't reply all.
We didn't, no, no, no.
Well, typically when we get a letter sent to the board, it's one of us replies.
No, I.
We didn't.
Jason and I spoke about it and you were gonna reply back to him basically saying that.
We were looking, we were gonna.
We will look into it, but it's, you know.
Well, according to, I mean, actually the latest and greatest here from Erica.
Yeah.
This gets sent to us on the 14th, which was yesterday. And Erica saying that, you know, he had an officer stationed there and he goes through all of the summary about it and at the end of the day, I don't, I think we just write this guy back and just say, you know, we've determined that the need to add a no truck sign is not in the best interest, there's, there's no, there's nothing here that supports that.
Well, maybe, because we did, we were gonna talk about, maybe you did send it, it was right before you.
I know, that's what I'm thinking, I gotta go back and.
To have to see, do account of how many trucks, I mean, I live off that.
Well, that's.
I don't get, Eric did all that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, I know, so.
So there's really no, what, what the, I think what the chief's findings were is, yeah, there's some trucks, but over, what is it, 30, was it 30, 31 day period? It was kind of diminimus and.
There were no tractor trailers, no dump, no 18. It was all service trucks.
And the trucks on the roads are servicing them.
Yeah, dead ends, pulling springs, a landscaper.
There was a period, it, it was, because there were a couple of accidents on 113 and they get rerouted along that way. So it may have been.
He may have caught that.
He's a new owner there, he's probably been there maybe a year. So maybe just all of a sudden, a bunch of trucks came through one day because there was an accident, but I, there is not excessive amount of tracks that come through.
Okay, so I'll, either way, I'll draft them and send them, you know, based, based on what I sent.
Yeah, all that's good, I just was looking to not reply to him when everybody, I mean, we'd all reply.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't wanna reply until you got the.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I wanna talk about, Madam Chair, is at our next meeting, I would like an update and an action plan for 307 Pleasant Street.
Okay, okay.
Oh, is that in the corner?
Yep. All right, there's a certified letter here that went out in April and I don't know, this is July. I mean, I don't know that, there are people living in that trailer. Did you?
What's that?
There are lights on later than that.
I can't hear you, what?
There are lights on there at night.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've seen them go in and out of there. I've seen, I've seen the pizza guy go in there.
There was an email I had sent to about the, the.
All of that needs to get.
But that, that's an action that's based on by law that the select board has to.
Yeah, can we get that on our next agenda? You know, we talk about the gateway to Dunstable being this way into the town and all, and I get all that. That's the, that's the gateway that I don't want anybody to see. And people drive to the Dunkin' Donuts and the thing and the, and that trailer, that the door was open, the pizza guy was in there. I don't know, what are they doing with the sewer water, dumping it on the lot? I have no idea.
Problem.
Bridget, Bridget doesn't know either.
No.
There's black water all over the place, I don't, I have no idea, but.
Bridget, me and the police chief had a meeting about this, but the week before I, before last, I was out.
Okay.
And she was gonna do a follow-up letter because she did not get a response from the first letter.
No, I couldn't understand that.
My, I, I shared it with Dana for any possible zoning violations, I haven't her back to them, but I will follow up with them on that. And then the other kind of issue that is present on the property is the, under the, is the junk bill of bylaw.
Yeah.
And that, that falls under the select board, so we can, that was the last thing I sent, so we can put that on the next agenda.
Yeah, please, yeah, absolutely. We just, we gotta demonstrate to everyone that we're taking some action because most of the people drive down that street and they see that thing and that mobile, that chassis trailer that's parked in there, I think they had a luau over there the other night.
Yeah, it'd be great to know what our teeth are. What is our, you know, is it through the Board of Health or does the select board actually take their recommendation from the Board of Health and what their role is up to our role? Sort of make, take some stands here.
It's, the select board has a role, Board of Health has a role. Dana, the building inspector may have a role, I'm not claiming that.
That's it for me. These just need to go into the record, Jason, okay? Danger's dog?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye. We're taking ice pack.